That ends homelessness. Our residents do not return to homelessness. Ninety-eight percent stay housed because of the care and the services.
The Downtown Women's Center is focused on empowering women and gender diverse individuals experiencing homelessness. For more information, go to downtownwomencenter.org. At Panorama Park, funding from the Community Investment for Families Department was put into great upgrades to outdoor equipment and playing fields. With days of outdoor fun coming up, Panorama Park is ready and it's game on for summer.
All of us have been waiting very patiently for this grand reopening of Panorama Recreation Center.
Today is a happy day in the Sixth District. They now have more baseball fields, batting cages, more soccer fields, and an improved jungle gym, a walking path, workout locations for people of all ages. We're just so happy to be here and we're so happy to celebrate the investment that came from the Department of Community Investment for Families.
And our department was created to end generational poverty and create community wealth, and we do this by making investments in communities like this park.
I am so excited to be here. You know, I didn't have to travel far. I live here in Panama City. I could have walked here. This is my backyard and I am so excited to see the investments in the communities that we grew up in.
The Sixth District is a community with a lot of density and a very small amount of park space. Therefore, when we have the opportunity to make investments in our district, it's always a good idea to make sure that our limited green space is improved.
Having exercise equipment here is going to be, it's going to increase not only physical health, but also the mental health of our, of our community members. Adding the improved lighting is going to be wonderful because now not only can the family use it during the day, but they can also use it during the evening.
Please stop by our play a lay booth. We do have one of those here today so that you can get some more information regarding upcoming programming like our day camps, our poster activities, and other sports that are coming down the line in the fall and the winter. Everybody ready to start playing baseball and soccer?
Thank you to everyone and let's get some games going.
A community-sponsored food pop-up helped around 200 seniors who would otherwise struggle to feed themselves. The event featured emergency preparedness, community resources, with much-needed kitchen staples in the bag.
Today, we're actually here at Casa Salazar. We're doing a food pop-up event. We have about 200 families coming out, being able to pick up a bag of nutritious food with fresh fruits and vegetables, some dry goods, some rice, some oatmeal, just to be able to take home and be able to provide for their families completely free. And they're also here getting some information on emergency preparedness and then just other resources that many of our families in the community have asked for.
We have a lot of seniors in Casa. It's a senior building, six to and over, and I know that a lot of them, unfortunately, their check is never enough, you know, they either need help from their kids or they need food, income, paying rent.
I got some Girl Scout cookies. You know, it's beneficial for everybody. Nutritious food is free. They come to you. You can't, you can't beat that. Somebody come to you, bring you fresh nutritious food. You can't beat that.
I love working with seniors and with the residents and community members, but it's this special connection that I feel I, I get to have and experience with them. I know it's not everybody's cup of tea, but I enjoy it and I love it.
For anybody that's looking for further information about Central City Neighborhood Partners, laccnp.org, whatever you need, we're able to either assist you or we guide you to another agency that offers free services.
Mayor signs Equal Rights Amendment petition. Port of L.A. receives federal funds for repairs and diverting organic waste from landfills. These stories up next on City Beat.
L.A. Mayor Karen Bass has signed the national petition in support of the Equal Rights Amendment, ERA, a constitutional amendment to explicitly prohibit discrimination based on sex. The mayor was joined by women leaders and politicians in the latest push to get the ERA over the line as the Twenty-Eighth Amendment to the Constitution. First drafted in 1923 and ratified by many states during the 1970s, the ERA was reintroduced in 1982 and has been before every Congress since then. Endorsed by over 40 organizations, sign for ERA is a grassroots campaign to reach a million signatures and move Congress to ratify the ERA. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has announced that the Port of Los Angeles will receive an estimated $58 million in federal funding for maintenance and repairs. According to the Port of L.A., the record amount reflects the federal government's commitment to reforming and rebalancing the Harbor Maintenance Trust Fund. The ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach move 40% of U.S. container imports and these infrastructure repairs will strengthen national supply chain networks. The federal funding will address critical needs that include warp repairs, seismic safety upgrades, and environmental remediation. For more information, go to portoflos angeles.org. L.A. City Council has approved a new program to support the city's recycling efforts and comply with California Senate Bill 1383. The state law aims to achieve a 75% reduction in organic waste emissions by 2025 and also rescue 20% of disposed food for people to consume. Standalone restaurants are high organics generators, according to L.A. Sanitation. But if their food waste is diverted from landfills, they can have the greatest environmental impact. L.A. Sanitation will allocate $4 million for the program to maximize organics diversion from landfills and help with the increased costs of recycling for some customers. For more information, visit lacitysan.org.
At the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, a recent expo shone a light on pathways to non-traditional careers for women. With no barriers to entry and learning available on the job, the LADWP is empowering women's careers and personal growth.
So today, we're here with the Women's Career and Wellness Expo and we're here to get the word out about positions and careers available with the Department of Water and Power and to let women and girls know the type of jobs that exist within the department and the opportunities that are available to them.
Folks that attend today, they'll get to see a lot of women in the non-traditional roles. It helps to see that somebody's already done it, so we have a lot of trailblazers here.
We believe this is a showcase for what the future could hold when we have the recruitment, the training, the retention of the workforce that actually will bring the city to the different levels that we're trying to achieve.
IBW Local 18 and the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, we want the knowledge out there that the opportunity is for everyone. We have entry-level jobs where we'll teach you everything. All you have to do is have the heart and the desire, and that's why we want everybody to know about these opportunities that are here. If you have a willing to work and a drive to want to do well, like we know all the little girls and all the little boys around, they will do fine. We can teach you that.
So as far as the technical expertise that's required for a lot of these positions, we're very fortunate that many of the jobs do have a lot of on-the-job training opportunities. So these opportunities allow us to train for these jobs while working and earning an income for our families as opposed to having to do them outside of work and in addition to work. For myself, I have absolutely no technical career education. I came from a retail background and I am an instrument mechanic supervisor where we work on boilers and turbines in power generating stations. And all of that was all through on-the-job learning and it was a great opportunity for me.
All these jobs are really open to various folks, folks that have high school degrees, some folks that have bachelor's degrees in engineering. Sometimes all you need to do is take an intro to electricity class that's available free on the website and that qualifies you for several positions that are non-traditional. So I really hope that a lot of people that attend the Career and Wellness Expo get something out of it, that they get to see all the traditional and non-traditional jobs that are available and come work for the department. It's a great place to work.
Nobody can tell you that you cannot do the job. There's no such thing. Make sure that everybody knows their full potential. Make sure that the department is available to provide the resources, provide the training, provide the opportunities for everybody to actually shine in what they are doing.
We're looking forward to having you to become a Local 18 member and a LADWP employee.
For Senior Fraud Awareness Day, the Stop Senior Scams Acting Program staged some of the typical scams to be aware of. The actors got the laughs they were looking for, using humor to give their audience some tools in the fight against scammers.
I met Sally at a dating website and we fell in love right off of the bat. Then her mama got sick with the COVID and she needed a little money. So send a few thousand dollars. She says she'd pay me back. Trouble is, I can't reach her anymore.
We're here at Fairfax Senior Center for the kickoff of Los Angeles and National Senior Fraud Awareness Day. We were hearing about a lot of scams happening to our actors and people in our community and we decided that we wanted to use our acting skills to help prevent senior fraud.
Stop your mumbling. Put your supervisor on the phone right now.
Seniors can be vulnerable to being manipulated, just like all of us can. And so this is a way of educating folks about some of the dangers presented by potential scams so that people can be on the lookout and not fall for them.
By seniors not knowing all of the ins and outs of the predators that are out there, they're more victimized by these activities.
Acting engages the seniors. Everybody likes to laugh. They like humor. When we get them to pay attention to that, then we have an educator come on to actually tell them what the fraud is about.
It's not you reaching out, it's someone reaching out to you. Why? Because they have something that they want to get from you.
It doesn't matter where you live. It doesn't matter of your educational background. It happens to everyone and seniors are the most vulnerable. We have a new motto. Take five until two. Take five minutes to think about it before you act and then discuss it with two people. $3 billion in fraud loss to seniors, it's many more times that. So we want them to feel comfortable in reporting senior scams.
A social media challenge has sparked an 85% rise in car thefts since last year. LAPD's Northeast Division and Hyundai held a car theft prevention event to bring solutions to car owners, from vehicle etching to steering locks and a software update for Hyundai owners.
We have been following the rise in car thefts in L.A. because of a TikTok challenge. Well, now the LAPD is talking about it. Police say that the challenge has led to an 85% increase in cars being stolen compared to last year.
We're here in the Northeast area. Northeast area is the largest geographic area for LAPD. So in the mixed-density community, we know that one of the things that we are trying to prevent are two specific areas. The first one is going to be grant theft autos and catalytic converters. We're trying to find some collaboration with public and private partnerships.
Last year in February of 2023, Hyundai launched a software solution to prevent the theft of their customers' vehicles that's been popularized on social media. We're going to have a no-cost, no-appointment-necessary clinic for all Hyundai customers in the Los Angeles area. Every Hyundai dealership across the country, 835, are doing the same work every day, thousands of times over and over again. Send anybody that has a 2011 through 2021 Hyundai vehicle that uses a key turn-to-start ignition system because we've got a great update for you.
What can we do to reduce property crimes? What can we do to reduce catalytic converter theft? So stay tuned, pay attention to your news, talk to your senior lead officers, and we will be coming to a neighborhood near you.
In this week's feature story, our Anita Bennett sits down with local author, podcaster, and activist Earl O'Farrell Hutchinson. His latest book tackles the current concern of the politics of age and ageism in America. Take a look.
Well, election season is right around the corner and this year, age is a key factor among voters. So how old is too old to run or is it even ageist to ask? Joining us to discuss the issue is longtime Los Angeles activist and writer Earl O'Farrell Hutchinson. Thank you so much for being here.
My pleasure.
Yeah. So you've written a book about this issue. It is called, Is Biden Really Too Old: The Politics of Age and Ageism in America? What prompted you to write this?
Well, actually, the subtitle kind of tips it. The politics, not just the age and ageism, the politics of age and ageism. Never have I ever seen age becoming an issue. Why all of a sudden now age? So now we come to Joe Biden. What do we hear over and over and over? One of the major political hit points against him by Trump, GOP, and critics, and a wide body of the general public. The guy's too old. The guy has cognitive decline. He's not fit to be the commander in chief. I mean, that's been a strong point they've been pounding him on. Then you've got conservative bloggers, conservative media, that's been out there and been put out there in the general public. Every poll I have seen, this is one of the things that really caught my attention and said, you know what? I think there's a book here. Every poll and survey I have seen has shown one thing across the board, almost uniformly. The majority of those of any age group, including many senior citizens, say there should be a cutoff in terms of age when someone can hold a political office.
How do you determine that?
You can't. It's like beauty. It's in the eye of the beholder.
And it's not just the presidential contenders. It's also, we ran into this issue with Senator Dianne Feinstein before she passed away. Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I mean, and now there's, there's even talk about Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor that she has some health problems and maybe she should step down. And then there was Mitch McConnell. So it, it's a big issue in Washington.
Well, and that's why I say it's had, it's developed a life of its own. And my guess is as we go forward, it's going to be more and more of an issue. So for example, there's not a day that goes by when you don't see watchers looking at Biden and reporting, ah, we caught him where he stumbled. So you're going to see all of that and it's just buried in people's mind. The guy's too old. He's not going to be able to make, I mean, critical decisions, foreign policy decisions, life and death decisions. Is that true? Of course it's not true. The founding fathers in the Constitution, remember, they only put age on one thing, the presidency, 35. There's no age on anything else in anywhere in the Constitution.
All right, well, Earl O'Farrell Hutchinson, thank you so much for coming in.
My pleasure.
In this week's Things to Do, attend L.A. Sanitation's Open House, meet the horses and the park rangers, and find out more about Koreatown's restaurant scene. All this up next on Things to Do.
The ever-popular Open Houses at L.A. Sanitation and Environment Facilities are happening now and on Saturday, June 1st, the North Central District Yard opens to the public at 10 a.m. L.A. San Open House features trash trucks and equipment demos in addition to information booths, recycling games, and refreshments. All children receive a special hat at registration and have the chance to operate the controls on the trucks. There's also a 360-degree video booth for all to enjoy. Consider bringing your own reusable water bottle to this zero-waste event. There'll be free beverages, food, and giveaways while supplies last. Head to the North Central District Yard for L.A. San Open House on Saturday, June 1st at 10 a.m. For more information, visit lacitysan.org. Meet the horses and the park rangers at a fun family event in Oak Ridge Estate Park. Join the Los Angeles Recreation and Parks Department for a hands-on experience with two American Quarter horses. Snacks and water will be provided for visitors and carrots and apples will be supplied for the horses. Learn about the role of park rangers and the mounted unit at an interpretive presentation by a mounted ranger. Meet the Horses and the Rangers takes place on Saturday, June 1st at 10 a.m. For more information, visit laparks.org/events. Join the Los Angeles Public Library on Saturday, June 1st for a look at the history of L.A.'s Koreatown through its restaurants. Eater L.A. editor Matthew Kang and photographer Emmanuel Han will address Koreatown's culinary scene and offer their thoughts on its future. Matthew Kang is the host of a YouTube series, K-Town, about Korean food in America. He also features on Food Network's cooking channel and the Netflix show, Street Food. Emmanuel Han is an L.A.-based commercial and documentary photographer whose latest book is Koreatown Dreaming: Stories and Portraits of Korean Immigrant Life. Join Matthew Kang and Emmanuel Han at the Central Library for L.A.'s Koreatown Restaurants on Saturday, June 1st at 10:30 a.m. For more information, go to lapl.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
Hi, my name is Amanda Charles. I'm the librarian three at Teenscape. Teenscape is the library within Central Library that serves teens and young adults, age 12 to 19. When we opened in 1998, we were the first public library dedicated space for teens. We have over 4,000 square feet of space with a collection of over 30,000 items. We act as ambassadors to the rest of the collection for young adults. There may be some teens who are reluctant to approach a librarian in the art department. They are unaware that they can make an appointment and view materials and special collections. And so we'll often be the ones to reach out and help make that connection and introduce them to that collection. The item I brought today is, it's a book. It's not rare. It's not unusual. It's called Korematsu v. the United States: World War II Japanese-American Internment Camps. It's part of a series on important Supreme Court decisions. I chose it because the Supreme Court is in the news a lot right now and there's a lot of talk about how important it is to choose the right justice. Korematsu v. the United States is an example of what can happen when the Supreme Court goes wrong and how it can have tragic effects on the lives of American citizens. So if a teen came to me and they wanted to know why the Supreme Court mattered, I might choose a book from this series and offer that to them. But the thing I really wanted to point out about this book is that it has this yellow and red YA sticker on the spine. You will find books with the YA sticker on the spine sprinkled throughout the collections everywhere in Los Angeles Public Library System. However, at Teenscape, every single one of our books, all 10,000 of our nonfiction books, all 10,000 of our fiction books, our graphic novels, our manga, everything has this young adult sticker because everything in our collection is dedicated to young adults. We're where students come and learn to be researchers and I'm really proud of that. Thanks.
Good morning to members of the public, Angelinos. Welcome to the meeting, this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, the 28th day of May in 2024. My name is Marquise Harrison Stossen. I serve as President Pro Tempore of the Los Angeles City Council. Public comment will be taken both in person in the council chamber and via teleconference for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Blumenfeld, DeLeón, Harrison Stossen, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McOscar, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, 12 members present in the corner, Mr. President.
All right. What's next?
Approval of the minutes of May 24, 2024.
All right. Councilmember Padilla moves. Councilmember Hernandez seconds, next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Price moves. Councilmember Rahman seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and it's time for the flag salute.
All right. I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for the flag salute and ask Councilmember Price to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The two people who stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sergeants, Mr. Herman disrupted the meeting during the Pledge of Allegiance. That's the first and last warning for Mr. Herman. Mr. Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, there's a request to hold items three and 13 on the desk. There's also a request to continue item 15 to Tuesday, June 4th, 2024.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing. Items two through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 17 through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Please note that no action is required for item 27 inasmuch as the budget resolutions for fiscal year 2024-25 has not been submitted at this time. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right. Without objections, those items are now before us. Do members have any items that they would like to call special? I see Councilmember Padilla.
I'd like to hold item 10 for an amendment that will be ready after public comment. It's just adding a report back clause.
All right. And we're holding item number 10 for an amendment that we will hear later in our meeting. Mr. McOscar.
Thank you. I would like to pull item 16 for an amendment, and the city attorney or the city clerk should have the amendment by now.
All right.
In the amendment reads that I move that item number 16 on today's council agenda be amended to have the council adopt the following in addition to the committee report. One, instruct the public works, Bureau of Contract Administration, and the Office of the City Attorney to report within 30 days on the appropriate ordinance, regulation, or policy, and it's adding the words "that is tailored to," ensure the workforce, and then adding "related to," hazardous waste collection, site remediation, or waste removal contracts, and then all of the next language is new, specifically incorporates the following requirements: just cause provisions and progressive discipline, differential pay, little to no wage and hour complaints, outstanding union contract grievances, unfair labor practices, sexual, racial, or related EEOC complaints, and creates financial penalties on employers who pay rates lesser than reported on their proposal municipal contract, who are guilty of wage theft, and excessive subcontracting.
All right. Is there a second? All right. Councilmember Padilla, seconds. All right. Any other specials members? Mr. Soto Martinez?
Yes. I'd like to call item 27 for a separate vote, please.
Separate vote for, all right. We'll hold item number 27.
Please note, no action is required for item 27 inasmuch as a budget resolution has not been submitted at this time.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Rahman?
I'd like to call item 24 for brief comments.
Okay. Item 24, Councilmember Blumenfeld.
For the moment, to hold item 10. We may have an amendment on that. We're just working it out.
Okay. Item 10 has been held. Any other specials members? All right. Seeing no other specials, Mr. Clerk, which items are before us?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items two, four through nine, 11, 12, and 14.
All right. Let's open the roll on these items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13, eyes.
All right. What's next?
The council may now proceed to presentation.
All right. We'll begin our presentations with Mr. DeLeón of the 14th Council District. Mr. DeLeón.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, as well as colleagues. Today, we gather to honor a truly extraordinary organization, Holy Family Services Adoption and Foster Care, as they celebrate 75 years of dedicated service to our community. HFS, as they're known today, is the oldest agency in Southern California and started right here in downtown Los Angeles. For more than eight decades, they have played a pivotal role in transforming lives as well as building families. The origins of HFS are deeply rooted in the compassion and foresight of the famous Hollywood couple Dolores and Bob Hope. Married in 1933, they experienced the transformative power of adoption firsthand in 1939 when they adopted the first of their four children. Back then, however, let me underscore, the landscape of adoption was vastly different from what it is today. Adoption was often surrounded by secrecy and shame, particularly for birth mothers who had little to no interaction with adoptive parents or any say in who would adopt their baby. Dolores Hope was profoundly moved by a heartbreaking adoption transaction that she witnessed with her very own eyes. She saw a car pull up into a horseshoe driveway where a young birth mother handed her swaddled baby through the car window. As the car drove away, the young woman collapsed to the ground in tears. This heart-wrenching scene moved Dolores to action. She made a vow that no birth mother would ever have to go through the adoption process feeling abandoned and alone. In 1949, Dolores and her husband Bob founded Holy Family Services with a mission to destigmatize adoption and provide birth mothers with the dignity and respect they deserved. From its early days, HF was operated by the Los Angeles Roman Catholic Archdiocese. This partnership lasts until 2007 when HFS became an institution of the Los Angeles Episcopalian Diocese, allowing the organization to further embrace the values of diversity, inclusion, and equality, especially for those in the LGBTQIA+ community. Today, this organization is led by the Executive Director Julie Brown and HFS Board President Mary Ann Wright. Julie's leadership and that of the entire organization have made HFS the most distinguished adoption foster care agency in Southern California. Let me just say- Let me just say, one of the most distinguishing services at HFS is their commitment to providing lifelong counseling services to birth mothers. This unique aspect of their mission ensures that birth mothers receive continuous support and never feel abandoned, as that one mother once did surrounding her child to an adopted family. It is this compassionate approach that truly sets HFS apart from other adoption agencies and highlights their dedication to holistic and empathetic care. For 75 years, HFS has ensured that birth mothers and adoptive parents always have the support they need and deserve. Throughout the history, HFS has facilitated over 7,500 adoptions, creating loving forever families and transforming lives. They serve five counties, Los Angeles, Orange, Ventura, San Bernardino, and Riverside. Their reach and influence are vast, providing nonjudgmental support to not only birth parents and adoptive parents, but for foster youth and foster parents as well. HFS dedication to foster care has been quite remarkable, especially in the face of the decline of foster parents. They provide ongoing support services for foster care resources, families, so they don't burn out, ensuring that every child has a loving and supportive foster home. Keep in mind that today, there are over 25,000 foster youth in LA County alone, and that's half of foster youth in the great state of California. Half of the foster youth in California are in LA County alone. So if anyone, anyone here today, anyone that's listening, is interested in stepping up and becoming a foster parent, you can talk to Julie today. They actually offer free Zoom orientations for becoming a foster parent. As we honor HFS, we celebrate not just an organization, but a legacy of love, compassion, and empowerment. Adoption is indeed a beautiful experience. It is the journey that empowers birth mothers, giving them dignity and respect. It dismantles the once shameful experience and transforms it into one of love and openness. HFS has been a beacon of hope for 75 years, and their work continues to inspire and uplift our Angelinos and many more across Southern California. On behalf of the great city of Los Angeles, we extend our deepest gratitude to HFS, Adoption and Foster Care, your unwavering commitment, Julie, and Mary Ann, and to the board members and to those who have been impacted most positively by them, your commitment to children and families has made our city and our world a much better place. Colleagues, Mr. President, as well as colleagues and those in the audience here today, I ask you to join me in congratulating HFS on 75 years of extraordinary services. Congratulations. Felicidades. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce a woman who is a 25-year social worker veteran. She is a woman who received her master's in social welfare from UCLA, her bachelor's degree in applied arts and sciences from San Diego State University, that's no other than Julie Brown. After graduating UCLA, she started her career as a medical social worker before joining the LA County Department of Children and Family Services, and she worked in the Adoption Division and then Quality Assurance Division. Julie was recruited into the nonprofit sector to lead the Foster and Foster Adoption Department of Vista del Mar. As Executive Director of HFS for the past 12 years, Julie focuses on making sure that clients are fully educated on their options and complex intricacies of the adoption process. Julie is committed to ensuring that culturally competent services reflect diverse adoptive families and foster care families that HFS serves. She's also an immigrant to the great United States of America, all the way from Germany, and one thing that we will not hold against her at all whatsoever, and maybe one of the flaws that she has, but she's married to no other than Pete Brown as well, too, right over here. Pete Brown, raise your hand right here so I won't see you. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in bringing up Julie Brown to the podium. Julie Brown.
Good morning to each of you. It's wonderful to be here today, especially as we continue to celebrate May, which is Foster Care Month. In the past 12 years, I've had the profound honor of serving as Executive Director for Holy Family Services Adoptions and Foster Care. It has been an incredible journey, working with diverse individuals and couples who have set out on a mission to create their forever families or to become foster parents for families in need. At HFS, we are privileged to have the Board of Directors with an unwavering commitment to serving families and providing hope to those who have possibly lost hope. Our remarkable staff shares this dedication, meeting each client where they are in life, and offering resources and support that they need to thrive. As Councilmember De Leon mentioned, over the past 75 years, HFS has facilitated more than 7,500 adoptions, over 7,500 forever families. This legacy is not only a testament to the vision of Dolores Hope, but also a tribute to the countless staff members, board members, and generous donors who have supported our mission over the years. One of the most touching rewards of our work is when individuals return to HFS to adopt, having themselves been adoptees of our agency. This cycle of love and support is the ultimate compliment and a powerful affirmation of our impact. While we celebrate our achievements, it is crucial to acknowledge the ongoing need for support in our region. The LA Department of Children and Family Services oversees more than 21,000 children, and of those, 12,000 live in out-of-home placements, in foster homes. Of these 12,000, though, there are only currently 2,500 foster homes under DCFS. So there is this huge need for foster parents at this time. This is a stark reality that underscores the vital role that HFS and other foster agencies play to fill the dire need of foster home placements. If any of you are interested in learning more about the rewarding work of becoming a foster parent, we are here to guide and support you. HFS proudly serves five counties, LA, Orange, San Bernardino, Riverside, and Ventura County, offering families a broader range of adoption opportunities and ensuring that more children find loving homes. I want to extend our heartfelt thanks to Councilmember De Leon and all of the members of the LA City Council for recognizing HFS on celebrating our 75th anniversary. Your support means the world to us. I also want to thank our amazing Board of Directors and donors who keep the doors open and costs affordable for people of all income levels. I close with this description of what I've learned in my career of adoptions. Adoption is a journey of love that unites hearts across different paths, forming a family built on a foundation of compassion, sacrifice, and an unbreakable bond of love. It is the ultimate act of kindness, offering everyone involved a deep sense of belonging and a place to call home. Thank you. I'd also like to bring up now our Board of Director President, Mary Ann Wright.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good morning. My name is Mary Ann Carney-Wright, and I'm a proud adoptee of Nancy and Jim Carney of San Francisco, Irish Catholic parents who watched their friends having children, but they were not in the 1960s. They adopted my brother, Jim, no genetic relation, and then, of course, my mother thought she had the flu, but she had my brother Stephen instead. We were a found family that became seamless. I stand before you today, representing the third leg of the chair, the Board of Directors. As with most nonprofits, HFS depends on fundraising as an integral part of the health of our agency, and this is what the board is responsible for. So thank you to the hundreds of board members who have come before me, guilds and individuals who have worked and continue to work to raise the funds of the agency. I stand on the shoulders of not only our first Board President, Mrs. Dolores Hope, but I'm joined in that effort in our current board. Two board members are with us today. Thank you.
Lastly, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, I want to bring up Lilia and Tim Smither and their son Toby. Tim is not only a Holy Family Adoption Services adoptive parent, but also an adoptee himself through HFS. Lilia is a nonprofit accountant, and Tim is a middle school principal with our very own LA Unified School District. Let's bring up their beautiful son Toby. Tim and Lilia Smither, please. Come on.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. My name is Tim, and this is my wife, Lilia, and our son Toby. Our daughter Maddie is currently in her last week in junior high, so she wasn't able to make it. Like he said, I'm not only an adoptive parent, but also an adoptee. Forty-five years ago, my mom was sent from Nevada to the city of LA to an oddwind mother's home, and Holy Family was able to place me up for adoption with a family. I always knew that I wanted to return to Holy Family and adopt after we were unable to have a second child. I guess he wants to take over the show. So it was a very easy decision for me, having already been an adoptee, and we just knew it was the right time. After six weeks in the NICU, Toby came home with us and joined our family two years ago. Our personal experience and working in different parts of the city of Los Angeles, from Pico Union neighborhood to East LA to currently in San Fernando Valley Northeast, it's given us perspective and really has cemented the idea that everybody has a universal need that needs to be met, and that's a loving and supportive family. And we can see what happens when they don't have that need met. So these infants and children who are in the foster system and go without adoptive families, they become adults, and these needs manifest themselves in various ways like we see around us. We are trying our best to provide the safety and security for our kids and also to advocate for those in need, whether it's in Ms. Padilla's neighborhood, Ms. Parks, Mr. Price, Mr. Rodriguez, or Ms. Rodriguez, known as there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the council members, I want to present to the Holy Family Services Adoption and Foster Care, Julie, as well as Mary Ann, if you can come up here. With that, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues.
All right, thank you, Mr. De Leon, and let's give a big round of applause to Holy Family Adoption Services and all of our speakers today. I will now call on Council President Paul Krikorian for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. An estimated 1 million Americans of all ages, races, ethnicities, and genders are currently living with a primary brain tumor. Malignant brain tumors are among the deadliest forms of cancer with just a 36% five-year relative survival rate and can induce substantial changes in lifestyle and well-being for patients as well as their loved ones. Increased public awareness of brain tumors through advocacy and support for vital research as well as education about the impact brain tumors have on the lives of patients and their families are critical to finding a cure. Now fortunately, here in Los Angeles, we are home to one of the leading brain tumor centers in the world, the USC Brain Tumor Center, where world-class neurosurgeons, neuro-oncologists, and researchers are singularly focused on developing new surgical approaches and techniques to ensure a higher quality of life and higher survival rate for brain tumor patients. So I want to thank profoundly, on behalf of their patients and their loved ones, the doctors of the USC Brain Tumor Center, many of whom are here with us today, and I'd like to recognize Dr. Gabriel Zada, the Director of the USC Brain Tumor Center. Dr. Zada?
Thank you. Thank you to the council and to all the council members for this acknowledgement and to help us raise awareness for a terrible disease, namely, brain tumors. And you heard the statistics that impact thousands of patients, thousands of caregivers and family members, and whether they're cancerous malignant tumors or benign tumors, this is an area where we need to raise awareness. It affects so many people. If you look at people like Ted Kennedy or the president's son, Beau Biden, or John McCain, and then hundreds and thousands of people who are not well-known, who suffer from this disease. It's our task to take on this disease, whether it's to provide care for patients or support for caregivers and their families, or ultimately, our goal is to cure brain tumors and continue to perform research. And we have an amazing team behind me today of surgeons, oncologists, scientists, social workers, nurses, and the list goes on. And we take care of, at the University of Southern California, Keck Medicine, our patients there, the LA General Hospital, which is right by here, where we take care of patients in the safety net margin of society, and then Children's Hospital, LA. And again, we thank you all for the time and recognition today for this really important disease. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Zada. You think about the global impact of cancer in general and brain tumors in particular, and how blessed we are here in Los Angeles to have professionals of this caliber available to us, when in so many parts of the world where they don't even have basic health care, they don't have really any opportunity to have a survival rate or maintain any quality of life when patients are impacted by this. So we truly are blessed to be the home of the USC Brain Tumor Center, and I'd also, in addition to Dr. Zada, would like to recognize Dr. Josh Nieman, the Scientific Director of the USC Brain Tumor Center, Dr. Stephen Gianotta, Dr. Mark Shiroishi, Dr. David Tran, Paola Mork, Nancy Hart, and Rebecca Gazarian, who are really the professionals that do so much for their patients. We're grateful to all of you. We thank you for the work that you're doing to make progress in this very critical field. And we are proud to declare, in addition to expressing our thanks to the USC Brain Tumor Center, we are proud to declare May 2024 as Brain Tumor Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles.
It's a big round of applause for the folks working on this critical issue. Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Krikorian. Next, we'll have a presentation led by Councilmember Bob Blumenfield.
Okay, colleagues, today we're gathering to honor the memory of Mahsa Amini. You know, with all that's going on in the world now, particularly in Iran, it's important that we do so. It's a young woman whose life was tragically cut short, but whose story ignited a global movement for justice and human rights. Today, I'm introducing a resolution that is going to declare September 16, 2024, as Mahsa Amini Day. And so this is a precursor to that, because come September, there's going to be a lot of celebration and recognition of Mahsa Amini at that time in the city and throughout the city. So we wanted to...
So we wanted to recognize the introduction of that resolution. Her story, as, as we all know, is a sobering reminder of the price of silence in the face of injustice. Her arrest and subsequent death for allegedly inadequate head covering underlies a grave violation of human rights, the right to bodily autonomy and freedom of expression. It's a narrative all too familiar to those who have sought refuge and opportunity here in our city. So we honor Mahsa Amini. Let us also renew our commitment to those principles. Let her legacy be a call to action, not just a reflection of what was lost, but a beacon guiding us toward what we must strive to protect: justice, equality, human rights for all. So we have a group here today I wanted to introduce to talk a little bit about this. And I wanted to start with our first speaker, Dr. Katie Amiri Yunesi. Dr. Amiri Yunesi.
Hi. Mahsa Amini, a 22-year-old woman, was held and then killed by Iran's morality police for allegedly wearing the mandatory Islamic headscarf too loosely. That's right, killed for not covering her hair the way the Islamic regime wanted her to do so. Women and girls living under the regime of Islamic Republic live in an extreme structural system designed to oppress them. Women-life freedom is a campaign seeking to expand and set the morale, political, and legal tools available to mobilize international actions against and ultimately end the regime that are oppressing women because of their gender. And then you came in. You with your open arms and open hearts to take us, the Iranian that had to leave homeland behind to find home in this civilized, humanized, and loving society. And God knows, you stood tall with us, side by side, and you realized the torture that our people in Iran are going through. And then you became our loud voice. You became our tower of strength, our backbone to fight this brutal regime miles and miles away, by remembering and stamping what happened on September 16, 2022, by making it an official Mahsa Day in our beloved Los Angeles region. Thank you for understanding and supporting us. Thank you for making us feel at home, and thank you for your big heart that pumps love and humanity in every beat. Thank you so much, the fine members of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Sivash Arani.
Respected Mayor Karim Bass, Chairman and Councilmembers, it is an honor to stand here to thank you for establishing Mahsa Day on the Los Angeles city calendar. This is a significant moment for both of hard-working Iranian community in Los Angeles and the global Iranian diaspora. Los Angeles, with a diverse community and compassionate officials, continues to be a beacon of hope to the world, as Mayor Norris Palson said in 1953. Mahsa represented a hopeless, captive, and lifeless innocent girl, whose story symbolized woman-life freedom. Women-life freedom is about the quality of one's life. Abraham Lincoln said, "It's not the years in your life that count, it's the life in your years." The Mahsa Amini movement was not just about the Islamic Republic dress code violation. It highlighted decades of women's oppression under a sexist regime. Half the population lacks control over their bodies, health, families, finances, social lives, marriages, employment, and child custody. This also affects those with different political views, beliefs, sexual orientation, races, and religions. Speaking of religion, the Baha'i faith, the largest non-Muslim minority in Iran, has faced a spectrum of abuses and systematic repression since 1979. I am Baha'i myself. I was expelled from a school, beaten by officials, and constantly humiliated as a child. Baha'i is not allowed to attend university, get a job, obtain a business license, practice their religion, or even have rite after death as their gravestone gets destroyed. God bless America for giving many of us resettlement opportunities regardless of our religion and views. Last week, the U.N. Security Council held a controversial moment of silence for a deceased Islamic Republic president. But this time, let us turn around to the innocent side. Please join me for a brief moment of silence for Mahsa Amini and so many other victims of brutality. Our sincere appreciation to great people of Los Angeles, to the officials, to Mr. Ardalan, notably Councilman Bob Blumenfield, reaffirming that Los Angeles is not just a city, but the dynamic portal to the entire world. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we're going to hear from someone who's no stranger to this chamber, has been here many times and is a loud voice in the Iranian-American community, Mr. John Ardalan.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. As a member of the city of Los Angeles, my colleagues and I stand before you today with hearts full of appreciation for the incredible gesture of kindness, of compassion, that you have shown in recognizing the tragic and senseless death of Mahsa Amini and declaring a day in her honor. Mahsa Amini was a talented young woman whose life was barbarically cut short by hands of current regime in Iran. Her senseless death has left a void in hearts of millions of people around the world. By declaring September 16, Mahsa Amini Day, the city of Los Angeles has not only paid tribute to her memory, but has also taken a powerful stance against the injustice and violence that ultimately caused her death. This sends a clear message that violence will never be accepted and that we will never be silenced. As we all gather here today, from all walks of life, backgrounds, and religion, we stand united in support of a single case, that cause for freedom. We must amplify our voices louder than ever. We must be the voice of thousands of Iranians who are unable to speak their own truth without facing severe consequences. We are their voice. We are their voice. I also want to thank you, Mr. Bob Blumenfield and his team, for their incredible effort in making this possible for humanity. These have worked tirelessly to bring this vision to life. I want to also thank the mayor of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles council members, and the city attorney for making this day possible. Let us continue to honor her memory and stand up against injustice. Woman-life freedom.
Before you make the presentation, Mr. Blumenfield, we've got a couple of speakers on the cue, beginning with Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield, for bringing these courageous individuals to our chambers. Thank you for uplifting Mahsa Zina Amini and what she went through. You all are very brave, not only to have talked about her when she was killed, but to continue to talk about her so that we don't forget, and to stand up for the people of Iran that are being killed in her in an attempt to protest the death of Mazina. So thank you so much for your bravery. Thank you for continuing to tell her story. Thank you for reminding us. And I'm just very grateful for your bravery, because not a lot of people are willing to do what y'all are doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Yaroslavski.
Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield, for bringing this presentation today and reminding all of us what Mahsa Amini sacrificed when she bravely defied the oppressive Iranian regime in September of 2022. Ms. Amini's life and legacy means so much to so many Angelenos and people around the world, many of my Iranian-American constituents in Westwood and West L.A. She started a movement with women, millions of people across the world, shouting women-life freedom, demanding an end to the oppression of women and political violence. Thank you for carrying her legacy on and keeping it alive. It matters. This matters. Announcing the day in September matters. In her honor and in the honor of every woman and man standing up to oppression, I'm proud that in July, we're going to officially be renaming the intersection of Westwood Boulevard and Rochester Avenue in Westwood as Women-Life Freedom Square. And we'll have the final date soon. And we hope all of you will join us to honor her legacy and keep that memory alive and keep pushing for what we know to be right and true. Thank you so much, Councilmember Blumenfield.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Blumenfield to close.
Just, thank you. Women-life freedom.
I think you all need a photo. There you go. All right. Next, we will have a presentation led by Councilmember Ramon.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. I just, I'm very, very happy to be here. You know, I've, I've been a co-presenter of AA and HPI Heritage Month now, since I started. But to be honest with you, I haven't taken up as much space in this room with my own kind of perspective on this month and what it means to me, and my own perspective of what this community means in Los Angeles. And so I'm really, really excited to be here today with three people I have incredible admiration for, who are arts leaders here in Los Angeles and who, more than anything else, are taking up space for arts and culture here in Los Angeles, taking up space as Asian-Americans, but not exclusively for Asian-Americans. They are creating their mark on this city in ways that are profound and beautiful. And I hope that all of you, because the work that they're doing is actually in all of your districts, I hope that all of you will have an opportunity to engage with the work, the beauty, and the powerful productions that they're bringing into existence across this entire city. I want to introduce Rajiv Menon, who is a producer and a curator based in L.A. and the founder of Rajiv Menon Contemporary, the only gallery in Los Angeles which is focused on art from South Asia and its diasporas. You can see some of the art up here in addition to pictures of the gallerist with his art. An avid collector of South Asian art himself, he has made it his mission to expand the art-collecting audience within diasporic communities and to promote new emerging voices in this space, including many artists who are South Asian origin and based in Los Angeles, including Shama Golden, Maya Sees, Manjari Sharma, Adam Debauer, and others. Rajiv has placed South Asian artwork in major museum collections in the United States, ensuring that contemporary artwork from the region has a permanent presence in our culture here in America. And today, we proudly recognize you for your commitment to enriching and expanding our city's vibrant art scene. Through your work, you've helped lift South Asian artists and curators. You've created joyful and inclusive spaces for people of all diasporic communities to come together and to share a collective vision for a more diverse Los Angeles. We want to thank you for shaping and empowering the next generation of Angelenos aspiring to enter the arts as artists, collectors, gallerists, and more. Let's give a big round of applause to Rajiv Menon. And Rajiv, I wanted to invite you up to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Nita Ramon, for this incredible honor. I came to L.A. and immediately found such an incredible sense of creativity, something the city is known for. And when starting the gallery, I became very aware that you can't create culture without that sense of community, without a sense of investment among the people who see themselves being represented in the art. It's so exciting, as we often do in months like this, to celebrate the visibility of AAPI, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander people. But it's not just enough for that, but to also see our perspectives and our ways of seeing the world, which the arts brings to Los Angeles. We're able to show different ways of understanding aesthetics, our different ways of expressing our experiences. And all of this has come together so beautifully in the community that's received the gallery. So I just want to thank all of you, the city of Los Angeles, and Councilwoman Ramon for having me here today. Thank you.
And I encourage all of you to visit his gallery, which is in Council District 13. It's on Sunset Boulevard. It is an incredible space. Next, I want to invite up someone whose name I think should be familiar to many of you here, Snehal Desai, one of the premier directors in L.A. who has secured the city's spot as a theater powerhouse. A lot of us know Los Angeles as a place for movies, and a lot of people, I think, don't know how deeply the theater scene runs here, from smaller theaters and neighborhoods to some of the most revered and respected theaters across the entire country. And Snehal is really one of those leaders on that scene. He was recently named the new artistic director at Center Theater Group, joining the company after a remarkable tenure at East West Players, which was designated an American cultural treasure by the Ford Foundation and is the nation's largest and oldest Asian-American theater company. And it's based right here in Los Angeles, and it's thanks to Snehal that it has grown so much. The Center Theater Group has, is very close by here, has theaters here, the Mark Taper Forum, the Amundson Theater, and the Kirk Douglas Theater in Culver City. And it is one of the world's most prestigious and largest theater companies, and it's right here in downtown L.A. And if you haven't been to a show in one of these theaters, I highly encourage you to attend. These are sold-out performances, incredible stars who come in and perform, and then they're telling beautiful stories. They recently played Funny Girl. They had Alex Edelman's Just for Us, which is now on HBO. Once Upon a Mattress with the amazing Sutton Foster is coming in the fall. It's, Sutton Foster is incredible. Snehal has raised the bar for storytellers everywhere. He has centered creativity. He has centered inclusivity. He has centered social justice. And he sought to uplift issues impacting Angelenos, empowering people often excluded from the stage to find their voice on the stage and to find their voice with Los Angeles audiences. So Snehal, I want to thank you for using your position to highlight not only Asian-Americans, but all Angelenos. You have left an indelible mark on this city already, and you haven't even begun your biggest chapter. I can't wait to see what you're going to be accomplishing at the Center Theater Group, and I'm particularly looking forward to your directorial debut at, at the Center Theater Group with the Green Day musical, American Idiots. Snehal, I want to invite you here to say a few words.
On, thank you, Councilmember Ramon. On May 13th, 2021, a survey was released that said that 42% of Americans cannot name a single Asian-American. The fact that Asian-Americans remain largely invisible in American society cannot be separated from the significant rise in hate crimes facing the Asian-American community. That number, that survey, when it was done in 2023, went up to 44%. More than one in four Americans cannot name a prominent Asian-American. It has been the honor of my life to be the artistic director of East West Players, the country's longest-running and oldest Asian-American theater company, and now Center Theater Group, one of the country's largest theater companies. During my tenure, I have sought to provide a stage and platform to those communities whose stories haven't been told, and to bring them front and center, and to talk about those issues that we don't talk about in communities of color, from disability to mental health. Asian-Americans have made a tremendous impact on the fabric of this country, and particularly in this city and state. But I dare you to go into a L.A. USD classroom and ask the class, "Name an Asian-American you've studied." Most times, not a single hand goes up. I want to thank you for the honor, and I want to thank you for this honor, Councilmember Ramon, for fighting for this. Ramon, for fighting for the visibility of the AA and HPI community and for the importance of arts and culture in the everyday lives of Angelinos.
Okay, I did not know that statistic about people not being able to name a single Asian-American person. And it is shocking, given how much Asian-Americans have contributed to this city, to this country. And I'm so excited that the three of you are doing work to change that, to make that an obsolete fact. Third, I want to invite up Sue Bell-Yank, who is a writer, a curator, and educator, and someone I'm really lucky to call a friend for over two decades. Through her work as an arts administrator and advocate, she has helped to create joyful and thought-provoking and inclusive performances and programming spaces all around Los Angeles. But I invited her here today because she was recently named the executive director at Clockshop, an Elysian Valley-based organization that works with artists to deepen the connection between Angelinos and the land that they live on. This work is particularly meaningful to me, even though Clockshop is not in my district, because Sue will be an integral part of Clockshop's work to expand community engagement around the Los Angeles River. And if you haven't been to their activations around the LA River already, I want to, again, encourage and invite you to go be in those spaces and to see how they are connecting the river's past to its present, to its future, in beautiful and powerful ways. I had an opportunity to attend one of the organization's events recently, which maybe you've seen pictures of it, the Kite Festival in Los Angeles State Historical Park in Council District 1. My children were in absolute heaven. It's one of the most beautiful events I've ever seen in my life. It is moving, it is dramatic, and it is in Los Angeles. And it is so inspiring to see how an arts organization can take over our public spaces and make them incredible, make them just something that is kind of an indelible part of Los Angeles. So thank you, Sue, for your commitment to building bridges between the arts and social justice communities in Los Angeles. We are so grateful for all that you do, and I'm looking forward to Clockshop expanding its work to Council District 4, which now has the longest stretch of the LA River in our district, 19 miles, either one side or both sides. So, welcome, Sue.
Thank you. I didn't know that about CD4. But thank you so much to Councilmember Ramon and to the council for having me here today. And thank you to Clockshop's founder, Julia Melzer, and Andy Wong, our board chair, for also being here today. It's actually our 20th anniversary of doing this work with artists to deepen the connection between Angelinos and the land that they live on. We believe that this is an important way to address the climate crisis in a cultural manner, you know, to really connect people to place so that they value the places where they live and their relationship with them in a different way. We just held our largest yearly event, as Councilmember Ramon said, our annual kite festival. We had over 5,000 people to LA State Historic Park and hundreds of kites in the sky. Flying a kite in a crowd requires encroaching on the space of others. It's impossible to stay in your own little bubble, which is what we often do in this city. You have to, you get literally entangled with other people and have to talk to people to kind of disentangle. And every time I saw that happen, I saw Angelinos doing so with laughter, with joy, with smiles on their faces, and the sheer artistry of the kites from dozens of countries, you know, families who have come to this city from dozens of countries, who have this incredible handcrafting kite sort of practices, I think was a really marvelous representation of everything this city has to offer and that is worth fighting for. The one thing I love about that is that the spectacle that we all gather to see is one that we each contributed to. For a lot of people, it's the first time they've ever been to that park, and many of us have also, many of them have also told us that it was the first time they felt really proud to be Angelinos. And you know, that park was never supposed to be a park. It was originally slated to be warehouses, and it was really the result of community activism, the Chinatown Yards Alliance specifically, that claimed it for public space, for nature. And it's important for us to remind people how that happened and how that can still happen in this city. We're committed to the idea that good things can happen in this city if people are connected to the places where they live and they can come together to fight for what they truly value. We hope to do that with the bowtie parcel along the river and some of the work that we have been doing there since 2014 and are continuing to invest in that site. But really centering the working-class communities of color in our neighborhoods to see what they value and what their visions are for those spaces moving forward. As we face, you know, crises of affordability, of housing, and public space scarcity in our northeast LA communities, we feel that's more important than ever. And of course, the work of artists is what binds this all together. We really believe their work can become a portal, a new way of seeing what's right in front of us. It can often ask the questions we too often fail to ask ourselves and reveal what has been hidden or erased. And that's why we keep doing what we do. So thank you so much for having us here.
So to all of these people, I just want to say thank you. We wanted to mark your visit with flowers and with certificates. And to all of you, I wanted to just say, here we are, Asian-Americans, we are taking up space, and I want to invite all of you into those spaces. Come and see the art, come and see the joy, come and see what we're building in this incredible city. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ramon. We have a member on the queue, Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. Thanks so much, Councilmember Ramon, for bringing three really amazing folks. And I also just want to thank you for bringing two folks from CD13. As you know, it's a sort of tapestry of the city in so many ways, but today we're here to highlight these three amazing leaders. Thank you for bringing art, thank you for bringing theater, and thank you for having folks connected by their nature, all those wonderful values, you know, that are here in the city. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Another big round of applause. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Before the round of applause, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Ramon, for bringing in these individuals. I just want to uplift Sue and the Clockshop. They do some phenomenal work in CD1. I was at the kite festival last year. I was just showing my colleagues some videos and pictures of it and how beautiful it was. And I just thank you so much for reminding us of what that green space is, what it has meant to the community, and how we need to protect it and preserve it, because it is on the line in many ways. So thank you for your work and always pushing that forward and reminding us of what we need to do to preserve that area, and just creating these events where people from all over the city and county come, thousands of people, flying their kites and just having a really good time. So thank you for creating those memories for people. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Ramon, thank you for bringing these exciting artists and residents to us today. We know how important art is in all of our communities, and so we look forward to encouraging your artistic expressions in District 9 as well. And remember, we know how important the arts are, not just for the aesthetic beauty, but as a tool for economic development. And so again, we just appreciate the role, the unique role you're playing individually and collectively, bringing the arts alive in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilwoman Ramon, and thank you all for the contributions that you make. I was late on the queue because I was checking in with my kids. I was like, did you vend at the kite festival? They're like, yes, yes, Mom, we did. And so thank you for giving opportunities to artists and pop-ups and all the things that happen that make LA great. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, I want to recognize Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this opportunity. It is with lots of sadness that we bid a congratulations and a farewell to a key member of our team that I think as everyone around the horseshoe knows and has come to, like Belen Lamas. Today is her last day with us in Council District 8. She's been an amazing spirit and a hard worker and does what it takes to get it right and embodies the spirit of not just this council, but the people of Council District 8 and the people of this city. So we're very grateful to her, Belen Lamas.
Okay, before we move to public comment, I believe there's an amendment. On which item? On item 30. If you could read the amendment.
I think you mean, Mr. President, I think you mean item 13.
Item 13?
On item 13, I wanted to move recommendation B, and that one, the city attorney will prepare the ordinance with the urgency clause, and when and if it passes, I'll ask for it to be sent forthwith.
Okay.
Is there a second to this motion?
I'll go ahead and second that. Seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded multiple times now, all good. Mr. Soto Martinez, for what purpose are you rising?
Yes, my apologies, I forgot to mention this. If we can send item 14 forthwith, please, we voted on the consent.
Okay, without objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
Was there another amendment that needed to be read into the record before we move into public comment, or can we move to a public comment now? No, we can vote on that. Okay, I think while we're waiting for that, I think we can vote on item 10 now. It's not amended, just, we skipped that last time? It's already been heard?
Mr. President, the amended motion for item 10 has not been introduced at this moment.
No, there's no other, just as it is, there's no amendments.
But it's here.
Okay, we'll hold it until after public comment then.
Yeah.
Is there an amendment that needs to be read in before public comment? The city attorney says?
But the city attorney has the comment if they'd like to do it now.
Yes, so I can read the motion now if you'd like, Mr. President.
Okay, if you could read that into the record.
So the amendment on item number 10 reads, "I move that item number 10 on today's council agenda be amended as follows. Instruct the Information Technology Agency, ITA," and this is the new language, "to report back to the Government Operations Committee with a prepared end of the new language, citywide digital code of ethics, emerging technology guidelines, which should include, with the assistance of the city attorney, an AI safety checklist for new AI applications. Additionally, ITA shall prepare a request form for all departments seeking to implement new AI tools to submit to ITA for review." So to clarify, this amendment asks for an additional report back to the Government and Operations Committee.
Okay.
And for the record, this motion was seconded by Councilmember Harris-Dawson.
Okay. All right, and then there is a motion that I will introduce on behalf of Mr. Corrigan on 3A. If you could read that into the record.
Yes. The motion reads that I move that item number 3 be amended to adopt the following findings and which have been uploaded to the council file for the construction of a new 128-unit mixed-use building, 13 units set aside as affordable for extremely low-income households. One, find, upon a review of the entire administrative record, including the SCPE number ENV-2024-1649-SCPE and all comments received, that. A, the proposed project qualifies as a transit priority project pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section 21155B, which by definition means that the proposed project is consistent with the general use designations, density, building intensity, and applicable policies specified for the project area in the regional transportation plan/sustainable community strategy prepared by the Southern California Association of Governments pursuant to PRC Section 21155A, and contains more than 50% residential, provides a minimum net density greater than 20 units an acre, and is within one-half mile of a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridor included in a regional transportation plan per PRC Section B, all criteria in PRC Sections 21155.1A and B are met, including environmental criteria, land use criteria, and at least one criteria, affordable housing, in PRC Section 21155.1C. And two, find that the proposed project qualifies as a transit priority project that is declared to be a sustainable communities project and is therefore statutorily exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act in accordance with PRC Section 21155.1.
And for the record, amended motion 3A has been seconded by Councilmember Yaroslavski.
Is there anything else we need to do before we go to public comment?
Mr. President, the council may vote on item 13, which is a motion McOssker, Blumenfield, Soto Martinez to adopt the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee Report.
Could we, could we hold that one?
Yes.
Could we hold that? I'd like to speak on it after a public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold that item, without objection. Okay, let's move to public comment then. I will read some names.
If I may, Mr. President, read the instructions.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer a public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for a participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request a speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star 6 to unmute. Let me repeat, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request a speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star 6 to unmute.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are item number 1 and items 17 through 29. So let me repeat, the items that are open for public comment are items number 1 and items 17 through 29. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the other items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star 6 to unmute yourself. If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, you need to immediately unmute yourself, or unfortunately, you will forfeit your speaking time, and we will have to move on to another caller. Finally, because of a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, two things were important. First, while waiting for your turn to speak, please keep an ear to the phone so you know in real time the phone so you know in real time when it is your turn to press star six to unmute. Second, if you're listening to this meeting on another device, please turn down the volume on that device immediately when it's your turn to speak. Between the time delay and feedback, it will cause a great deal of confusion if you continue to listen on your other devices. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call some names. The first one is someone who uses the N-word. And last, and Rabbi, N-word Rabbi, and then Ohio, last name Ohio, first name Brandonberg. Another person choosing to use the N-word, Goat Puppet, Andrew Grabner, Stacy Cigar Bolinger, Rob Quan, someone who signed up under the name Trump, and Harriet Elliott. If I've called your name, feel free to line up. And identify which name you signed up under. First speaker. I assume you're one of the N-word users. Go ahead.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
I, 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 I'd like to correct you, sir. The First Amendment allows me to use the word nigger for the record.
So you need to stick to the agenda items first.
Yeah, 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 nigger. I'm gonna speak on item number one, nigger, and then item seventeen to the end, nigger. Is that okay with you? Is that okay? Circle K? Okay. I got you on page.
Which N-word name did you sign up under, sir? We have, we have multiple races today.
We are voting here on Kevin DeLeone's motion for the best idea. Who's creative as Kevin DeLeone on item number one for convenience and necessity to put a bar on a roof? That's a genius. Don't forget to vote for Kevin DeLeone. We need him back. We need him on committees. We need him on commission. And stop this bullshit, Bob. Kevin DeLeone, God's balls.
Items, sir, not campaigns.
Seventeen now. Seventeen now. Am I on the right topic, Gro? Is it gro or gross? Because you're grossing me out.
Stick to the items or I'm gonna move to general public comment.
Yeah, I'm on item seventeen, I said. Establishing a hearing date for maintenance and operation. Fuck item seventeen for the record. Then we go to item eighteen, relative establishing for Z Service Street Lighting. Fuck street lighting. Then we go to item nineteen, the Bureau of Street Lighting, like I said earlier, fuck street lighting. Item twenty in particular, however, is an issue of great importance. That important is a parcel map related to 732 East India Avenue. Not that I care, but fuck that item, too. Then on item twenty-one, Gross, Mr. Lee and Rodriguez. Is that Mumu Rodriguez here today? Because Mumu Rodriguez needs to know about the responsibility of shooting of a person by the name of Gavin. Now, it's not Gavin Newsom, because he's too fucking stupid to be wasting a bullet on. However, the Los Angeles Police Department is having a presentation across the street regarding honoring police. Well, guess what? Fuck the police on item twenty-one. They don't save people. People have been dying at the bus stops. People have been getting stabbed and shot on the trains. America is not safe.
So I'm gonna need you to stick to the agenda items or I'm gonna move to general public comment?
Yeah, yeah, asshole. I'm on item thirty, twenty-two with my last thirty seconds before you fucking interrupted me, asshole. Pumpkinhead. Motherfucker. Yeah, circle K. I'm on twenty-three now. Fuck twenty-three. It's about beautification. This fucking city is the dirtiest, nasty, ugly fucking shithole I've seen in my life. Get those fucking homeless people off the streets, not in shelters, but in the luxury condoms.
General public comment?
Now, Brandonberg versus Ohio, U.S. 395, 444, 1969, is a presentation by the courts saying that, send the Jews back to Israel, save America. I will do my part. Bury the niggers. It's not offensive speech. That's protected free speech. Look it up. Brandonberg versus Ohio. Google it. Because if that anti-Semitic racist prejudiced motherfucker says that my free speech is offensive, I can just imagine what a nigger like you would do to me by setting me up on a proton account like those four bitches and that fucked-up judge Gary Conito from now serving that bitch hole courthouse in Torrance. But by the record, everyone, don't forget, vote for Trump, fuck dumb dumb Biden and your fucking policies.
Mr. Herman, your time has expired and also your Trump is well in excess of our council rule. It's too large.
Next speaker, go ahead.
Oh, my name is Harriet Elliott. I wanted to talk about quantum supremacy.
Good morning. So you have one minute for general public comment?
I'm sorry, general public comment. The author actually backed down about the teleportation. He said in an earlier book, Beyond Einstein, that we'd have teleportation in sixty to a hundred years. He backed down. So I'm gonna take it off my T-shirt. I have had twenty people die around me, all my friends, anyone who's done a favor for me. Or, yeah. Here is a woman named Ellen Davis. She's an English teacher at Valley College. Of course, I was twice as old as everyone else, but she took a liking to me and always talked to me. The woman that looks, her picture is a big yarn underneath the, she's on Valley College mural. She told me that Ellen Davis suffered a big tragedy, but I couldn't, she couldn't tell me because I'm not a family member. Ellen Davis is dead. I'm gonna keep going back. They're lying to me that she's in Canada. She's not.
Okay, next speaker.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items and general comment. Where's the council?
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment? Please begin with the items.
Twenty-one is reward money for snitches and CD twelve. You know, just money, more money for people to go snitch, snitch out their neighbors. Why, why isn't there ever any reward money if there's, if we have any information on when the cops go and shoot people? We never get any reward money for that, but, but you can get reward money to go snitch out your neighbors. Look on this motion. Twenty-two is a Kevin DeLeone motion. He shouldn't have anything on this agenda and his motion should be voted down. He's a fucking racist and you all know it and you all just keep approving his motions and just keep giving him more and more and more power. Same with twenty-three. No on twenty-three. Let's see. Moving on, we have, can I speak on twenty-seven today or? Fuck the budget. And you should reconsider it and adopt the people's budget and we should hear a presentation, you should hear a presentation from the people's budget at Lake Coalition. Defund and abolish the police. Don't cut city services, other city services. Let's see. Twenty-nine, electing Marquise Harris-Dawson as council president. Definitely no on that. Your whole, you know, whole campaign strategy for council president is you all are, you have, working too hard. You all have too much work. I mean, you know, it's so difficult. Three two-hour meetings a week with frequent recesses and a couple of twenty-minute committee meetings sprinkled in on the same day. It's so much work. And most of you aren't even out here right now. We're paying any attention to public comment, but it's so much work. Three two-hour meetings a week with like six, like ten weeks of recess every year. You work, especially for the amount of pay you're getting. You're not working. So we should have three meetings a week and Marquise Harris-Dawson is not gonna actually be a good council president. He likes to cut off members of the public, you know, likes to lower people's hands.
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on this item?
I'm gonna send me to general.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
But, but they, yeah, he like goes in and lowers people's hands on Zoom. It's weird. It only happens when Marquise, when Marquise is running the meeting and I'm calling in. I have to go and, you know, pay close attention, continuously go and re-raise my hand like every twenty minutes because Marquise lowers my hand. He's doing it to other people. I don't know if he does it to everyone or what he does, but whenever Marquise is running the meeting and I call in, I have to keep re-raising my hand because my hand keeps getting lowered. And it's only when Marquise is running the meeting and I call in. So I wonder why that is. So, but he can't do that. And Marquise is not a good choice for council president. So vote no on Marquise Harris-Dawson for council president. Kevin needs to resign. You fucking racist Kevin. And Paul, you're a lame duck council president.
Next speaker.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Morning, Groot. Rob Quan, I'd like to speak on all items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
For item number twenty-seven, this is our budget resolution and not that you're gonna change anything, but just want to acknowledge the absurdity of cutting waste, fraud, and abuse positions at the Controller's Office when they're actually revenue generating. We are also cutting positions for the payroll system implementation. This is something that is gonna have inherent growing pains, something that the Personnel Committee Chair has spoken about. And you're just pouring fuel to the fire and just want to flag that for when you ultimately throw Mahia under the bus and just ensure this shit hits the fan. On the budget, I think it was just remarkable to see the number of people who came up here and asked why none of you are paying attention. My council member previously spoke about the need for more public comment on the budget and spent most of the meeting talking to Heather. Want to also just note, there was an interesting back and forth about grid and the mayor's staff being non-responsive, refusing to report, and the council president said that's unacceptable and that's not the way things work. Well, why is that? Because you actually have the power under Charter Section 217 to subpoena people, including those from elected offices. So you could drag them out here. If they're not responsive, the committee chair could bring them in. It's also fascinating that just last week, our glorious Governance Reform Committee moved forward a proposal to get rid of that power. Your actual power to ensure the mayor is responsive. Absolutely absurd. As RBG would say, that's like throwing away your umbrella in a rainstorm because you're not getting wet. Item twenty-nine is on our council president and congratulations. The fifteen fiefdoms are set to unite under a new house, but remember, the iron throne is the most dangerous seat in the world. If this were happening in 2019 or 2022, I'd be a whole lot more optimistic. Unfortunately, the last few council presidents have shown the way the seat degrades the occupant, bringing out the worst in them. And even if it doesn't, you are still reflective of a failed institution. Once you guys get into power, all you care about is keeping that power and fending off anything that threatens it. At least, we will have somebody with the temperament to not just lose their shit screaming at the public every day until they turn red in the face. So that's some improvement. Want to just note, there's this whole conversation about having more time in your district and fewer meetings. What about smaller districts that are actually manageable? Or what if we actually didn't have three to four presentations a day? I'm old enough to remember Herb and we had, we had presentations stacked on Friday with a light agenda, so Tuesday and Wednesday were actually predictable and productive. For my general, I just want to note for the progressives around the horseshoe, and not, not Councilmember Rahm, and she gets it. Being anti-corruption is an essential pillar of being progressive. It's not some cute and fluffy thing. An inefficient and corrupt government is incapable of spending money appropriately. Shamelessly corrupted government is incapable of asking taxpayers or ratepayers to pay more when they have zero faith in those institutions. Ugo is a huge fan of a public bank. I, I am somebody who whipped up the first three council members behind that and handed it over to Herb's office. But I don't support the goddamn thing after seeing four council members getting arrested in four years and seeing the mess at LADWP. That is the biggest, largest municipal utility. That is the example. And what do we have to show for it? A corruption scandal, an ongoing endless one. So let's not treat ethics as a luxury.
Thank you. Next speaker.
And before our next speaker begins, I'm gonna ask that the members of the public who are here, if you could please hold your applause on one way or the other until after the speaker is done. It makes it difficult for me to hear what the speakers are saying. So, good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, the pumpkin head gets dumber every day. Now we get to number one. What a great fucking idea by Kevin DeLeone doing businesses, Mr. Lion. Let's give him a hand. Yes, I have always wanted to go up to the top of a building and get drunk and barf down at the street. And now I'll be able to do so. Yes, for only $200, including your bar fees, parking, sales tax, and don't forget the 25% tip. What about the drugs? Oh, we'll get to that later, sir. That's, that's off the meeting. No, I'm sorry. Yes, you'll be able to take and shove those goddamn shots down your throat and barf them on down. That way, by the time you get down to your car, you'll be able to pass the breathalyzer, avoiding DUIs. Thank you to Kevin for fighting DUIs. Now we get to more Kevin items. Number twenty-two, a public benefit, the Metropolis Project. Yes, Unicef doesn't know where the Metropolis is. It's right on the border of her district. And of course, they twisted the arm under the great Jose Luis Wezar. Let's give Mr. Wezar a hand. Well done. Yes, who twisted the Metropolis's arm. Marquisi was there in the back of the room, I believe, when this happened and forced them to pay a million-dollar bribe, oh, excuse, excuse me, an engineering special services fund donation. I mean, we don't want to use the B-word. And of course, now we'll go into the six-stroke viaduct soccer field so that Kevin can build a soccer field with the $1 million of stolen money. Good job there, Kevin. And then of course, now we elevate ourselves. We have all signed up with the N-word today as Bob correctly pointed out to honor number twenty-nine as Marquise Harris-Dawson, known effectually as Wezar 2.0, assumes the council presidency. Now, Marquisi, you're only one indictment away from being the acting mayor of the second largest city in the United States. Let's give him a hand. No, no, Marquisi, don't walk out now. I know the FBI is calling you right now, but you could take that call in here. And this meeting is sponsored by AT&amp;T, by the way. AT&amp;T, reach out and touch someone. And of course, who's gonna be the vice president? Bob could have been the president, but when I released that racist load of names he called a staffer, he blew it, didn't he? Another failed Jew.
General public comment?
And now we get to the general comment. And of course, we caught Buckethead over here, known as Pat McOscar. Is that what his name is, over here? Yes, doing what? Fraternizing on emotion. His big fat head was caught. I know it's a very large, big five-gallon fat head. And, you know, with all those FBI agents watching, you shouldn't really be doing that. You should do that over at the Arco Center down in the garage where the bags of drugs are. And of course, Kevin is having trouble with his reelection campaign. Why won't you debate in person so that I can see you and that pretty girl you're running next to and debate the real issues? Are you afraid to debate, Unicef shadow candidate? Come on, step up to the plate and invite the puppet. Finally, I give the dress on Roman a ten, but the hair zero. Mommy hair again. It's no good with that dress.
Okay, I'm gonna read some additional names. Albert Ramirez, Alejandro Campillo, Alfonso Directo, Christian Sanchez, Daniel Jones, Elizabeth Peterson. If you've heard your name, come on up.
And speakers, remember, there's no need to line up in the order in which your name was called. So as soon as you hear was called. So as soon as you hear your name called, please feel free to line up on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
This is regards to the Equal Rights Amendment, Article 5. The Congress, whenever two-thirds of both houses shall deem it necessary to propose an amendment to the Constitution or by the application of the legislatures, the two-thirds of the several states shall call a convention for the purposes of amendments which, which in either case shall be valid to all intents and purposes as part of this constitution when ratified by the legislatures of three-fourths of the several states. Equal Rights Amendment was ratified by the state of Virginia on January 29th, 2020, and in the body of the amendment says it shall be going to affect on January 29th, 2022. That was two years ago. Tyranny is when our government does not do what the people voted for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Item 16. My name is, uh, Albert Ramirez.
So you have one minute for general public comment then.
Councilmember McCosker and city council members, good morning. My name is Albert Ramirez. I'm the president of ILW Local 56, the Shipscalers Union, and we handle environmental hazmat work throughout Southern California and the coastline. I'm here, uh, joined by my sisters and brothers from Local 56, Local 94, the Southern California District Council, Local 13, and our international ILW. With the hope that this language presented lifts the lives of working families, provides worker protections, and offers labor justice for workers, we strongly support the language presented and we are excited and inspired by your leadership on this, on this environmental and labor justice item. God bless you, the council, and long live the ILW. Cis apule.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Good morning, council members. Elizabeth Peterson, applicants representative and building owner representative. I am speaking on item number one. I wanted to let you know, um, that this building was a derelict building in downtown Los Angeles. It was restored fully. It is now a historic monument. Uh, the building owner wanted to make sure in working with D-Lang, in working with LAPD, and council member De Leon, that it was fully occupied. Right now, we have ground floor commercial. We have offices in the building and the top floor is restaurant. Um, we've worked carefully with LAPD. They're very concerned about vibrancy on Broadway and keeping the streetscape active. This building activates all aspects of Broadway. Uh, it's 612 South Broadway. It's the Desmond Building. Again, a $30 million restoration of the building. It's a significant building that was built in 1924. In looking at this, we felt it was a perfect location to have restaurant activity and a bar, and we felt that keeping the building open into the evening would help. They are members of the Downtown Hospitality Forum chaired by LAPD. They're very involved in D-Lang and the neighborhood council. We have support from all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Yes, Ale Andres Campio and just general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
Good morning. My name is Ale Andres Campio and I'm a member of the Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance, the ACT LA Coalition, and a resident of historic Filipino town in City District 13. We want to appreciate council members Rahman, council member Harris Dawson, and council member Hernandez for their leadership for social housing and for introducing a motion today that will help build the city's capacity to build social housing on a large scale. As a part of an organization rooted in workers' rights in Koreatown and beyond, and we were instrumental in passing Measure ULA, we deeply support anything that will make social housing permanently affordable, resident-led, and inclusive of a pathway to collective ownership. In Koreatown, we have many historic communities of color that are on the outs. Eviction notices are on the rise. Many people don't know what to do, and social housing is one of the key solutions moving forward. We look forward to working with you on this and establishing housing, uh, host, social housing through the Measure ULA funding. Thank you.
Thank you. As our next speaker is coming up, I'm going to call a few more names and, uh, Mr. Blumentfeld might already have called some of these names. If so, I apologize for the duplication, but, uh, Christian Sanchez, Daniel Jones, Elizabeth Peterson, Glafira Lopez, Jay Richardson, Maria Patino Gutierrez, Rabbi Dusty, and Scarlett De Leon.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Sure. Alfonso Directo Jr., uh, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Okay. Good morning, council members. My name is Alfonso Directo Jr. I'm the advocacy director at ACT LA. We're a coalition of 46 organizations advancing housing and transit justice in LA County. Uh, I'm here excited to support the social housing motion being introduced today. Appreciate council members Hernandez, Rahman, and, uh, Harris Dawson for their leadership on social housing and introducing this motion, uh, today to deliver social housing on a large scale and sustainably for the long run. Uh, this motion will identify financial tools needed to support this program. Social housing means communities have the power to develop and manage their homes, and it would mean housing affordability for life and multi-generational stability and a pathway to collective ownership. I look forward to supporting the city in developing this motion and establishing social housing here in LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Yeah, Glafira Lopez, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Glafira Lopez. I'm with Sage and ACT LA. Um, we're here thanking, um, uh, Rahman, Harris Dawson, and Hernandez for introducing the social housing motion. As someone that is a tenant rights organizer and works with tenants every day, um, I hear the hope when I've talked to tenants about social housing because for these members of ours that are rent burdened, that are at risk of being displaced, that are being harassed by their landlords, social housing provides a really hopeful vision for the future because it's a, it's a promise of stable housing. So thank you so much for introducing this motion, and I look forward, um, to seeing this, uh, social housing, uh, motion become for, to advocate for more permanent and affordable housing and for the city to develop this report. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Maria Patino Gutierrez, and I'm with Sage. I'm general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Yes. Um, so my name is Maria and I am with Sage and we're members of the ACT LA Coalition, and I'm a resident in the city, and I'm also a tenant and a mom raising my kids in the city. I appreciate the council members Rahman, Harris Dawson, Hernandez for the leadership towards social housing and for introducing motion today that will help build the city's capacity to deliver on social housing on a large scale. As many of my colleagues have already shared, um, social housing provides an opportunity for long-term stability in our communities, and many of us walked the doors and did community engagement for Measure ULA, and we're really excited to be able to finally have this opportunity. Um, we really encourage for social housing, um, to be permanently affordable, resident-led, and inclusive of a pathway to collective ownership. We're looking forward to working with you all and establishing social housing with Measure ULA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Scarlett De Leon, campaigns director with ACT LA. We are a countywide coalition of 46 organizations working on housing solutions. Social housing is the type of housing that all Angelenos deserve, housing that is affordable forever and tenant-controlled. Tenant governance and/or ownership is extremely exciting in a city where tenants are constantly harassed and exploited and where the dream of owning a home has become more distant. We look forward to report back on the financial tools that would make collective ownership and social housing a reality. I appreciate council member Rahman, Harris Dawson, and Hernandez for their leadership for social housing and for introducing a motion today that will help build the city's capacity to build social housing on a large scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jay Richardson, general public comments.
Okay, so you have one minute. Please begin.
This is in regard to laser fields and homeless service providers. Um, and, and these, uh, almost all or all service providers for the homeless have these laser fields that guide the human robots when they need to know where they are. Some of these laser fields unfortunately touch the bodies of some of the applicants, of some of the people there, including the women, and the women don't know where these fields are coming from, these touches are coming from. Uh, they don't know where they're coming from, if, if they're aware of it, and they don't know who to tell to have these touches stopped. I don't believe the police department knows how to handle those touches from the laser fields adequately. I don't believe they know how to do that. And, uh, I'm complaining about the touches from the laser fields that guide the human robots, uh, as they go about their business.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Uh, we're going to go next to the phones. So let's go ahead and take the first caller, please.
First caller, which items would you like to speak to?
Yeah, hi. DanielGus.substack.com. Just general public comment today.
Good morning. So you have one minute for general public comment.
Yeah. Um, council members, um, your, you have hundreds of, of empty kennels in LA Animal Services. Uh, Mr. Harris Dawson, 50% of the kills at Animal Services are in your district. Trying to find out why we are telling the public that you never kill for space, but you actually have a planned memo that your general manager Stacy Gaines approved that outlines the kill plan. Um, why are there dozens of empty kennels in the mission pound? Uh, why are, just this morning, somebody volunteered to foster the South LA pound, Mr. Harris Dawson, and was rejected? So, so why are animals who are healthy and adoptable being killed? There's plenty of space, not enough, but plenty of space, and you are telling the public that we don't kill animals for space? Why was a senior, happy, healthy dog photographed with Girl Scouts suddenly on the kill list until I brought it to the mayor's office's attention?
Caller, your time has expired.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak to?
Brock Landers, Los Angeles private investigator.
Which item would you like to speak to?
Uh, one in 17 through 29 and general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
All right, one. Uh, why are you still trying to add places to this community that sell poison? People act like alcohol isn't a big deal, but it causes many problems in the community. Example, when I was drinking, I snuck away and gave, insert name here, a sad clown. Back at the party, when she realized the state of her mascara, she was embarrassed and still mad at me. Eighteen, maintenance of streetlights. If we're going to keep, people are going to keep stealing copper from streetlights, I think that we should go the way of Oakland and, uh, just bring back the four-way stop signs. Nineteen, uh, street lighting. If we're talking about street lighting for safety, I think that we need to address the rules of crossing guards. Crossing guards are getting reprimanded for helping kids in an adjacent crosswalk. That's ridiculous. Don't we want people to walk an extra 20 feet to help children? Uh, 21, government stooges and, uh, they're talking about being snitches. Andrew, um, why don't you tell us about the names of the police that are shooting people that we don't know about? Twenty-two for the soccer field. Uh, I think we should talk about naming rights. I think we could have a smoke and scan field at, uh, Maury Wiggs Stadium, maybe a Happy BJ, uh, section. Twenty-five, uh, didn't you have a lady here a couple of weeks ago talking about the environment, global warming, and all of that stuff? If global warming and environment are such a big issue, why are you constantly waiving sequel requirements? It's almost like it's just a talking point, a way to scare people into conforming or to make it so that only, uh, rich people can afford to build anything anymore. It's like you guys don't even believe in man, bear, pig. Why would Al Gore lie to us about the terrifying half-man, half-bear, half-pig? Taking credit for inventing the internet is one thing, but lying to us about man, bear, pig is on a whole nother level. Not that he's the only one taking credit for stuff he didn't do. Uh, general public comment. I was working on the Brock Landers Library and using over things under the city council's purview that I find troubling, then it hit me. What do you call it when a puppet of the ruling party openly admits to paying people to be silent or to have them conform to the party's message? Threatening people for speaking out against their masters. That's right fascism. I'm embarrassed that it took me so long to see it. What gave it away was when the puppet kept repeating how they paid people to censor their speech, bouncing around like a puppy looking for approval from their master. No wonder Paul and Bob get so mad at Mr. Spindler and his cool puppet. They thought they were getting a cool finger puppets from wish.com but got stuck with finger cuffs. If you want to pay me for my silence, call me and make an arrangement. 1-800-DINGLING. Dusty Gabs, give me a ringling if you want some dingling. Until next time, nerds and virgins, this has been Brock Landers, your friendly Los Angeles NPC.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak to?
This is Andrew Riddick for item number 13 and general public comment.
So item number 13 is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general. So you have one minute for general public comment.
So I, I'd like to recognize that as a gay man, you're all putting forth an amendment to the administrative code to allow for the inclusion of minority populations being celebrated by the city, which I would normally applaud you for, yet even when you're duly informed that the city of LA is willfully honoring a man who attempted a coup against the United States, a man who characterizes transgender Americans as, quote, transgender insanity and, quote, transgender cults, someone who calls for a transgender military ban, who promises future discrimination against transgender individuals and doing away with federal healthcare protections for those who identify as transgender. Take a look at the fascist guidelines in Project 2025, and I know you haven't, because if you had, you'd be speaking up and doing something besides raising a flag a couple miles down the street from an illegally installed city-sanctioned brass and marble plaque to a bigot on Hollywood Boulevard. Google "human rights campaign, Trump's timeline of hate," and then ask yourselves why you chose...
Caller, your time has expired.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Last week, I attended LAPD commissioner's meeting, and what they do there, they have one person from the audience in public, in person, and then one person calling in and back and forth until they're done with everyone speaking. That was a very intelligent way to meet the, uh, people's responses. They didn't say, "We're only taking five minutes of people calling in just because they're tired and got to go to another meeting." Uh, when the public budget is, was online, everyone should have been heard. So going to five minutes when people waited three hours to speak is not an acceptable response to the general public. So think about that. Maybe you should go to that forum and say, apply that. One person in pub, in person, one from, uh, calling. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak to?
Hi, good morning. It's Sean from Camoga Park.
Yes, we can hear you, and if you could lower your voice just a little bit. Um, which item would you like to speak to?
Item 29 and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
Item 29, I support Marquis Harris Dawson for pres, for president of city council. Maybe he can think about some things before he becomes president. We usually have, uh, general public comment.
You have one minute for general public.
Yeah. I enjoyed a parade yesterday, Bob Blumentfeld, and I, I enjoyed a parade yesterday. I hope Bob, Bob saw me yesterday. I was across the street from Brownie Village office. Uh, I am so angry with Wayne Stern, the comment he made... I am so angry with Wayne Spiller and the comments he made on Friday. My family was, my brother was in the military. He ought to, shame on you, Wayne Spiller. I'm so angry with you. Oh, yeah, I heard on Channel seven, they're doing the, you have to, you have to pay a fair, go in and go out in North Hollywood. It's a pilot program I heard it's going to be for ninety days. That's good news for me. Maybe I can come back to City Council. Um, we used to get testimony at Grand Ice City Hall years ago when I first came in twen, in the fall of twenty, in the fall of 2008. I hope he can, I hope Marquis Harris-Dawson would bring that back, because I'm, I'm sixty years old, and I don't know how long I could get downtown. I mean, I might have some problems later on.
Caller, your time has expired.
Thanks, Sean. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Good afternoon. Which items would you like? Okay.
All items and public comments, sir.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rob Quong, for your talent and your information. Quickly, let's go to item twenty-one, one and twenty-two, Mr. DeLeon. I agree with those, but I want to thank you for bringing Holy Family Services in and really letting the public know who the real star of the whole family was, Dolores Hope. What a wonderful human being. So thank you for that. Let's, let's see, number twenty-one, The Reward. Wow. Certain individuals say that you're snitching on your neighbor. Well, if your neighbor's a murderer, don't you think you should snitch on him? Again, Andrew, I just don't get you on that, that you want to protect. One of the most difficult things to do is to turn somebody who has committed murder, but sometimes you have to do it for the safety of the public. So again, Andrew, I hope that you can change your mind on that. Item twenty-nine, now, I can't believe this, but I agree with Andrew Grebner. You know, I can't believe that the council, I just can't believe who you're going to choose as president. Mr. Krikorian, you and I didn't agree, but I believe you were the best of the best. I don't feel that way. I don't feel that way. When you give the public five minutes to call in because you want to, five minutes, and the disgrace and disrespect you give to those people who call in that are mainly from the Valley, you don't think much of the Valley. So for the president, I just hope that there's somebody there that can stand up and say, "Look, you know what? I want to challenge. I want to be the president because I'm the best of the best. I know we have the corruption, but we need to get past that and start looking to see how we can heal this city before we have all these great events in the city." Let's go to public comment.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Thank you. To Mr. Bluefield, great parade yesterday, sir. Excellent, outstanding. And I want to thank you for bringing the Iranian community, celebrating Muammar. I apologize for not saying it right. Again, the Iranian people who are in this country love this country more than those idiots who come and just degrade this great city. Isn't it amazing that if we look around us and we look at the people who love this city so much and they appreciate it, are now people from other countries, Latinos, wherever they're at, they love this country? And yet, there are those who come, who used to speak so proudly and so honorably, that now all they use is bad words. And, you know, this is a thing that I would love to see. I would love to see these individuals go back to who they were and really just pound on the issues, not, not on the people. Let's deal with the issues. Do anybody who thinks I pay people, you know, those.
Caller, your time has expired.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak to? Private caller, please press star six to unmute.
Sergeant Duarte, is that Mr. Spindler? I see him making a motion that seems to be consistent with the sound.
Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak to? Caller ending in nine-seven-one-six, please press star six and mute.
Hi, good afternoon. I'd like to speak to item number eighteen, nineteen, twenty-nine, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay, I want to start with number twenty-nine. All right, good afternoon to the council members. So number twenty-nine talks about calling for an election to elect someone to become council president. Whoever becomes the council president, I hope that they do take into consideration of establishing equal public comment at the chambers and on the telephone. That's what I hope the new council president does. Next thing I'd like to see is proper representation. That's a, that's a thing we definitely need when it comes to council president. Let's go to number eighteen. Let's go to number nineteen. So these two items talk about maintenance of streetlights. Now, what I'd like to see the city council do is look into doing maintenance of more than just streetlights. I'd like to see maintenance done at the parks. Solon Park and Bolton Park, Little Landers Park in Tonga. And I'd like to see something done about the conditions of the park that it's in right now, and I'd like to go to general public next to discuss further.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so the parks we're talking about is in Monica Rodriguez's district. Solon Park has old and outdated drinking water fountains that need to be replaced with modern drinking water fountains. And there is, out, there's a restroom outside of the baseball field in Solon Park, and there's two sinks that are missing plumbing, and they're broken, and they desperately need repair. And the park that I'm talking about in Tonga is called Little Landers Park, and that's located at the intersection of Commerce Avenue and Vermont Street in Tonga. The one thing I'd like to see is if, if Monica Rodriguez can look into introducing a motion to fund repairing.
Caller, your time has expired.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak to?
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I'd like to speak on a variety of items and the general public comment as well.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay, well, item twenty-two is public benefit payment. Looks like it's, they're amending it from December sixteenth, 2014. I'll never forget, a couple of years ago, I had a minor little chit chat with the new council president Harris-Dawson about public benefit payments. But in this case, it was a case in which Atlas Capital, owned by the Goldberghs company, sponsors the Central City Association, so very legitimate, returned their Rachelle Weezer contributions fourteen days before the FBI investigation. Can read about this in City Watch today. Now, was Goldberg in cahoots with the FBI? No, but when I asked Marquis Harris-Dawson about how that worked out, he said, yeah, he had gotten a donation from them shortly thereafter, after he rescinded it from Weezer and put it on Marquis Harris-Dawson's office holder account. But he said, "Look, why did I take it?" He shrugged. "I get a lot of contributions. I don't always know." Well, that's not the council president we want. We don't want a guy who's willing to kind of pretend he didn't know, like with the Seabreeze donations, all those characters, including Han and Bustaino Garcetti. That is the city corruption that we've been fighting against. So with regard to item number twenty-nine, Marquis Harris-Dawson's appointment to council president, I don't think so. I think that's a terrible idea. I think that this is a guy who grew out of the hindquarters of Herb Wesson as a complete lackey, and during Wesson's reign of incredible, to Wesson's credit, he never got indicted, not yet, not yet, and Krikorian never got indicted, his entree. But Marquis Harris-Dawson did exactly nothing to make it better for the people so that we can, and if he does become president, will he open up virtual testimony during the committee meetings that Nithya Raman herself and Yaroslavski and everybody credits with allowing them to get their progressive ideas forward and pushed forward by suddenly being able to challenge the malfeasance that Krikorian loves to preside over in privacy? And when I say malfeasance, I mean literally the lack of transparency and accountability when that is in fact.
Mr. Previn, you've exhausted your one minute on item twenty-nine. Please move on to another item. Or you can continue during general public.
Sure. No, 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 thirteen, I'm going to go to thirteen, which is the pride flag. You know, people support pride in L.A., but to put up a pride flag right in front of Civic Center, now, are we not begging a lawsuit? Isn't this what happened in that other community? And don't we really, isn't pride something that we have established robustly in many sections? Do we need to be, this is a question, you know, I wear a rainbow proudly if I'd like, but I don't understand why the government has to do that when they know it's a dicey area. Is it to stand up and be strong? Okay, I mean, good luck, but we said, "Let's stand up and be strong to the gun lobby like Krikorian and O'Farrell did to the tune of about a half a million dollars we had to pay out so they could grandstand and do nothing."
General public comment.
Is there not legal? My general public comment wrote is that I think we need to replace the staff at the city attorney desk, mainly you and your co-star Issa Gary, because you're conflicted. What you do in the off-hours is betray the confidence of the public, so to come in and cherry pick who gets to speak and enforce arbitrary rules about your understanding, Fabel Two, "I'm not sure I understand what you mean." Guess what? You don't have to understand what we mean. You don't have to understand what we mean. The people speak into the microphone to speak to the public and to the council who are supposed to be seated and listening, which they're not. And you botched the language to instruct the council to pay attention during a fair public hearing the other day. Check in with Fabel or Dion O'Connell, who knows it. And by the way, Marquis Harris-Dawson also popped up during one of those sessions and was hiding behind a pillar, talking to a lobbyist. Was it McCosker back in the good old days? Hmm, I don't think so, but I think it was Arnie Bergoff or one of the guys who was also encouraging his wife to help all of you with contribution.
All right, thank you very much. That will close public comment on all agenda items and close general public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's next before us?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items one, seventeen through twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-eight.
All right, members, those items are now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Next, we'll bring up item number three, as amended by motion three A. So item three as amended is now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. That will bring up item ten, as amended by motion ten A, which has been distributed. Do any members wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. That will bring up next item sixteen, as amended by motion sixteen A, which has been distributed. I see no members wishing to be heard on this item, so let's. Oh, I'm, on item sixteen, Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and members. This is an item where we heard some public comment today, and I know we've, we've heard this in committee, and we've had an opportunity today to amend it. This issue is one of great import in the port of Los Angeles and in the San Pedro Bay complex. The speakers who came today are members of Local Fifty-Six. And Local Fifty-Six are the ship scalers union. Ship scalers do some of the most dangerous and some of the dirtiest, and easily some of the most important work in the port of Los Angeles and in the port of Long Beach and in areas outside the perimeter of the Tidelands. They engage in environmental cleanups. When we have a spill, and that spill makes it, which happened recently in Wilmington, and that spill makes it to the San Pedro Bay, ship scalers are the people that put out the booms and get in the water on floats, on boats, and clean up that sheen which is damaging our environment. These are the women and men who go into the belly of the ship and scrape out the materials that have leaked and collected, and these are toxic, dangerous materials. These are the men and women who literally scale the sides of ships to take material off of them so that they do not further contaminate our environment. I am unable really to describe all of the work that they do because it is as complex and as far-reaching as the environmental damage can be in port operations. And these are women and men who are organized in the port of L.A. but have often been forgotten, but have often been forgotten. They are a sister union, a sister local to the ILW, to the great ILW that has so much work in and around, especially through the, through the western region of the United States. But sometimes they operate at a disadvantage. And what our measure is doing today is giving us, giving us a chance to look for working rules, to require rules and protections and training and other modes so that Local Fifty-Six can further organize, can further build, and can bring to us a cleaner environment, and in doing so, give greater dignity to their work, and I will say greater pay, and I dare say an opportunity for healthcare and for retirement and for those things. In a rich western society, we should be affording all of the folks that use their backs and their brains and their arms to do this work that is so critically important. And so I was honored that Local Fifty-Six today gave me, just as a representative of this great council, gave me one of their vests that I'll wear proudly when I join you in future endeavors. But council members, I will urge you to cast an aye vote for this measure and to keep working on this partnership with working men and women in the port so that we can uplift them as they protect us. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember McCosker. All right, I see no other members wishing to be heard, so on that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, we'll go next to item number thirteen, which was also called special for comments by Councilmember McCosker. Councilmember?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item thirteen gives us a chance to make a modification to our administrative code to correct something that was, I believe, unintentional. We have provisions in our code that technically disallow us from raising the pride flag over city buildings. And so it was just a year ago that we introduced this motion, and I'm so grateful to Councilmember Monica Rodriguez, to Ugo Soto Martinez, and to Tracy Park for cosigning this or seconding this. And I know that there's a great deal of support for this measure. Like the county, we will, when this passes, we will have the ability to raise the pride flag, and if we pass this with an urgency measure and send it forthwith, we will have an opportunity to do it in time for Pride Month in June. So I know there's a great deal of support for this, but I just want to uplift the, the year that we've spent putting this together. I want to also thank the committee and thank the city attorney's office for giving us an opportunity to put an urgency ordinance in this measure. And also, I will urge a forthwith action so that we can have this back this week and begin raising flags next. So thank you. I will urge on this one also an aye vote.
All right, thank you. I see no other members wishing to be heard. Let's go ahead and. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. That'll take us next to item 24, called special by Councilmember Ramek. Councilmember.
Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak on this item, which is a small thing but can be a really big thing for our neighborhoods. I introduced this motion just last week, and it's going to fund crucial speed mitigation infrastructure around some schools and places of worship in District 4. This includes Garden Grove Elementary in Reseda, the Academy for Enriched Sciences in Encino, the James Jordan Middle School in Reseda, Carpenter Elementary in Studio City, and so many others. By addressing these high priority locations identified by the DOT, we are taking proactive steps to protect our children, our families, and our neighbors. And I'm really excited that we have an opportunity to do this work across our district. We put forward a motion for funding speed tables along Hyperion Avenue in Silverlake. Speeding is preventable, and with the right infrastructure in place, we can really ensure the safety of our community and prevent future tragedies. As I said last time, we should not have to wait for injuries to happen, for deaths to take place before we do this kind of investment. So, I urge an aye vote today, and I want to thank you all for your support in moving this forward.
All right, thank you. I see no other members wishing to be heard, so on that item, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
All right, thank you. That'll bring us next to item number 29. So, members, as you all know, I'm coming to the end of my term on this council in December, and as I informed all of you, it's my intention to step down from the position of president that I have had the great privilege of, of serving you in since October of 2022. And so, that brings us to today's item, which is the election of my successor. And I hope that we'll be able to ensure that we continue to maintain the same kind of seamless transition of leadership and, and cohesiveness that we've, that has been the hallmark of this council for the last couple of years. And so, I wanted to explain how today's vote will go. It will require three separate votes. So, the first vote will be to suspend the last sentence of Council Rule 3. And the reason for that is that Council Rule 3 makes reference, cross-references Council Rule 1, which specifies a date for the transition of the council president. So, we need to suspend that because, because we're, the motion calls for a transition date of September 20th, 2024. The second vote is a yes or no vote on whether to call for today's election for the position of council president to be effective on September 20th. And then, the third vote that the motion calls for is to elect a new council president effective September 20th, and Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson has been nominated for that position. So, so everybody understands that process. Okay, so with that, we can proceed with the first vote, which is to suspend the last sentence of Council Rule 3. So, I'd ask for your aye vote on that motion. And let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. The second vote now will be to call for the election of council president to be effective September 20th, 2024. This is whether or not to call for that election. So, on that item, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
All right, thank you. So, that brings the item before us, and in keeping with the tradition that this council has had over the last number of years, because this is a vote involving the council presidency, I am going to turn the gavel over to our city clerk, Holly Walcott, who will preside over the actual vote on item 29. So, oh, there you are. So, Ms. Walcott, please.
Thank you, Council President Krikorian. Today's third vote, as Council President Krikorian says, is for the election of the council president by voice vote conducted in alphabetical order, and this will be for the remainder of the term that ends in December of 2024. Unless I hear an objection, we are prepared to proceed in that manner. As the council clerk calls your name, please state the name of the council member you are voting for to be the president of the city council effective September 20th, 2024, through December, the December date in the council rules. Please, Mr. Clerk, please proceed with the vote.
Yes, Madam City Clerk. Bloomingfield.
Marquise Harris Dawson.
De Leon.
Marquise Harris Dawson.
Harris Dawson.
Marquise Harris Dawson.
Hernandez.
Marquise Harris Dawson.
Hutt.
Proudly voting for Marquise Harris Dawson.
Krikorian.
With my best wishes for success, Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson.
Lee.
My friend, Councilmember from the 8th District, Marquise Harris Dawson.
McCosker.
Marquise Harris Dawson.
Padilla.
Marquise Harris Dawson.
Park.
Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Price.
Someone with a background, training, and experience to do an outstanding job as council president, Marquise Harris Dawson.
Ramon.
With pride, respect, and love, Marquise Harris Dawson.
Rodriguez absent, Soto Martinez.
The gentleman from the 8th District, Marquise Harris Dawson.
Andy Jarosowski.
Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson.
14 ayes to elect Councilmember Harris Dawson.
That is a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson. You are now council president-elect, and I will now yield the floor back to the council, current council president, Council President Krikorian.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Walcott. Thank you, members. Councilmember Harris Dawson, congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you to all the members of the council and everybody who has advised, pushed, cajoled, struggled with us over the past few months to get to this particular day. A special thanks to Council President Krikorian, who's made every resource available so that we could have as smooth a transition as possible. You'll hear more from us later until September. Expect to see me with my head down, studying as hard as we can so we can be as prepared as possible when we take leadership of this council. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, what's next on the agenda?
Council has motions for proxy and referral.
With that objection posted and referred, next?
The desk's clear, sir.
Terrific, thank you. Members, any announcements? Councilmember Harris Dawson, announcement? Any announcements on my left? Councilmember McCosker.
I do have an announcement, and I have a couple of folks who are going to stand with me, right behind me, if we could give it just one moment. Colleagues, tomorrow, I'm delighted that I will be joining Altacay for Blue Economy Day along with our mayor, Mayor Karen Bass. A few weeks back, I introduced a resolution that we all signed recognizing May 29th, 2024, as Altacay Blue Economy Day in the city of Los Angeles. The blue economy is defined by the World Bank as the sustainable use of the ocean for economic growth, improved livelihoods, and jobs while preserving the health of the ocean ecosystem. Altacay at the port of Los Angeles is the world's largest ocean research and development destination growing by the minute for the blue economy. It's a hub for marine science, research, education, and it's home to some of ocean and climate tech's most innovative companies and higher education collaborators, which include right now USC, UCLA, and Caltech. And I'm sure more to come, right? Altacay is led by its board chair, Geraldine Nets. Many great board members, but I want to call out Dr. Melanie Lundquist. But I'm joined here today by president and CEO Terry Tamanen and founder and executive vice president Jenny Crusoe, and by Robin Abe, who now heads up development, correct? Robin Abe's husband, Len Abe, God rest his soul, was actually the original person who thought of this idea. And he developed it, and it was, it was started up by others. Jenny Crusoe was on that first team, and when he passed, Robin joined the team and has been an instrumental through-line for this beautiful and wonderful idea. Altacay is transforming the port of L.A. waterfront into this 35-acre innovative solutions and clean jobs campus. Among one of the highest priorities of the city of Los Angeles, of course, is to fight climate change by promoting innovative and clean solutions to some of the world's most pressing problems. But at Altacay, we can also foster economic growth to create new jobs and boost wages for our residents as well, clean the environment, and create great, great jobs. In 2020, the Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation, which we know as the LAEDC, designated the blue economy as its first new category of jobs in more than a decade, with the blue economy expected to reach a global value of $3 trillion by 2030. On June 8th of last year, World Oceans Day, Altacay broke ground on the Center of Innovation, a renovation that would house, house the west coast's largest economy, blue ocean research and development center. These warehouses will be home to tenants in carbon capture, aqua farming, and more, all in ocean sustainability and the emerging blue economy. Last week, I had the honor of pulling the curtain and unveiling the newly renovated Altacay building located at Berths 58 through 60 at the port of Los Angeles. And that is tomorrow, what is going to have its grand opening. The upgraded facility will host a variety of tenants engaged in progress, in projects to support the blue economy, developing new technologies that are inspired by and harnessing the power of the ocean. Tomorrow, I'm thrilled that now on our Blue Economy Day, we'll be celebrating this grand opening of the Center of Innovation. This is an opportunity for us in the harbor and beyond to, to explore and protect the future of our planet while preserving good jobs and creating new sustainable jobs. So, it is my honor to invite you all to visit Altacay at the port of Los Angeles, whether it's tomorrow for the grand opening with the mayor or sometime in the near future. Please come down to the harbor and see this incredible work that Terry and Jenny and Robin and so many others are achieving. And on behalf of all of us, we have, which will re-present this tomorrow, we have this resolution naming tomorrow Altacay Blue Economy Day in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Been a long time coming. Congratulations. All right, any other announcements, members? All right, are there any motions for adjournment? Members on my left, any motions for adjournment? Members on my right, any motions for adjournment? Councilmember Price, motion for adjourn, okay. All right, seeing no motions for adjournment, last chance. All right, with that then, members, please go out, serve the city well. This meeting is adjourned.